...on the ballot, in the county, in the effective counties that depended upon how the agencies structured the tax, would then be levied upon businesses. So ultimately, the legislation itself doesn't prescribe what level of, whether it's, you know, X amount per way of its tiered based on the number of employees if small businesses, that is, that takes along those lines. But all of those details would be developed by the new agency when the measure, when placing the measure on the ballot.
As I recall, we go on the ballot.
I think that would...
We already decided on that.
But linkage fee they can, which is our main development, is the head tax requires a ballot approval.
The head tax.
Yeah, so this is one of the taxing mechanisms that's covered under 1487. There's three different types of taxes that they get required.
This is an employee tax, but my understanding was that it could be slapped by the authority on businesses without going to a law.
Yeah, but that's the third. So there's essentially a residential tax which requires a head business per employee, a head tax, which would require a, and then a linkage fee, which would not require a assuming that one of the other two forms of taxes have been approved by the government.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Who's next? Hello? Hello, Mary. Evening. Scott Parker, 3308 Los Angeles Road, Lafayette. Eight years ago, table nine of the dog, important small numbers that we have to deal with. Some of them, years ago, are called city meetings addressing the issue of whether or not eight years, especially in context of unpermitted use, the program for coverage, their qualification, if they would allow the law to apply for the city to read the requirements. Is that yes or no?
Yeah.
They didn't? Okay. And my second question is, to what extent do these new laws, with the cities, the implementation of the laws that are adopted, affect both the unpermitted use, it seems like the whole process to go forward to the city for qualification? And two, uses that are similar to the use of illegal unpermitted uses? And would seem similarly to come to the city and get a qualified A U if it's illegal, I mean, illegal unpermitted uses?
Right, so I think it's, yes, I think it's like a story there, a success story structure, that you're going to locate your E E units, you have existing...
It's a house. Not two houses.
You have two houses.
All right.
Okay. I think, I remember this coming up, maybe two versions of the A D U law that someone was telling me that they had a house that really was probably more than a half a year, and then they wanted to build a primary residence. It sounds like you have two.
I have a 850 square foot legal, legal unpermitted use, so I'll put it back to 30, so that might be what it's structured about. But the question is, the process to qualify, the legal unpermitted use.
Right, I think you would go through this process that I've just mentioned, and if it meets all the requirements, then you have an A U.
Beautiful. Thanks.
I will comment in a minute. Michael Griffiths, 22011.
Brother.
So, my question is, as I said, quick first, a layover to these things. So my question was, are these new bills that are coming to be signed, are they only for future applications? Or can they be applied retroactively to existing applications?
Well, that's a big question. So then it would have been signed, and I think we presume all of the time that we just discussed will be signed. And then the law will affect on January 1. So it's probably, it's a little complicated answer. So some of the issues are probably going to be dependent on the application was submitted, and some of it is going to apply even for applications that were previously submitted on, let me just give an example, on 5/31 that I referenced. So if an application was submitted before January 1 of 2020, that is complied with that requirement for the 5/31, that's going to impact us if you're going to start, I think, going through to January of 2020, if that makes sense. So it's, that is a little bit complicated answer with the one that you gave as an example. So it's going to depend on the situation.
Yeah, I mean, you were very good with your slides sitting through, I'm in sales of slides. I know people sleep very quickly. So it's, we're getting to sleep, and I thought, did I miss something?
No, I mean, that is really going to depend on that particular law and the application.
Great, thanks. Okay, we're coming down.
And Troy Edison, Paul Whiteover, Lafayette. And I believe that my first question was already answered, which I didn't here address, was the chance that these laws should be signed by the governor by November 13th? That sounds like there aren't any of these on, that there's a question about, was it 100% chances?
Well, so it's one of these, there's never 100% chance of that. So I just got it. The governor during the, during the year, specifically since the legislature, I want 1482, I want S B 330. He has specifically said in public that he wants those bills, and the assumption is that they're, they're to him, a position that he, he would like to sign. The rest of the measures, he's not specifically made any indication of. That said, this governor's been very upfront about wanting to create three and a half million new homes and do whatever he can administratively legislatively to facilitate additional housing construction. During the legislative process, the Department of Finance, other state agencies that we would look at to kind of weigh in, to kind of tip, you know, where the government might be going, they did not have any, I would say, outstanding questions at the end of the process. I mean, obviously, they worked closely with all of these officers to help the bills. So on the outside looking in, there's not, there aren't any red flags that jump out to me that say, oh, yeah, this is something that the governor's likely to veto. Obviously, we do some, his first year on the bill's side, and so it'll be having somewhat of a feeling out process. This legislative cycle is a little interesting in that, in that regard. So I don't want to say that, yes, he's going to sign all of these, but I would say, but likely, if he looks at all these papers, probably it's probably high.
Thank you. My other question is regarding non-residential properties, we already talked about, commercial fees. But are there any other fees, obviously not associated with all units, but impacts, commercial and outside of bills? I'm wondering if there's been any consideration to cities that may have reprioritized towards residential work or to meet timelines? And therefore, other non-residential properties could end up being moved back with of the staff?
Yeah, on the, on the discussion, for example, with 1482, there was lots of conversations at the very end of session, concerns coming from builders, builders in the construction community, that there were going to be partial taxes on empty parcels, parcels waiting for development, other potential commercial impacts. The operators have kind of deferred to the new agency in a large part as to how they want to instruct those types of fees. So what the local impacts may be would be, I would say, varied on, for example, under that, a lot of us will have fees or taxes they apply to be determined. I think on your question of are we, are we, is there any less parallelization to other types of non-residential development? I think that's a lot of political question. I think that a lot of the proprietors and authors of this bill would definitely favor or make some steps of developments that we are going to be doing, you know, where are the traditional non-residential that they start factoring into residential components? Particularly in, you know, in city quarters and things along those lines. But obviously, I think that that's much more of a political question. So very, remember, remember, location, location as to how they're doing.
But the descriptions, they are only for, we're looking for residential, for example, only five areas. Those are all very sensitive towards residential.
Thank you.
The house in Congress, this afternoon, 19.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We're coming down.
One day, Paul, on the previous day, a couple of subcommittees, that Mayor and Councilman Delish, your concerns about having enough meetings and that sometimes a six day end, that's a big problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not even sure we can get five meetings in six days, doing the notice and the sevens. And that's just the one project. And we've got four, five, eight, ten projects. That's literally impossible, it seems to me. I mean, it's the least of all. But I mean, the series, one thing to consider is don't adjourn some of those meetings. I've done this before at other meetings, I've been involved with, I don't want to say it's a specific rule, but just so far, we need to take...
Talk us to the mic, please.
Yeah, this is one we need to, to move to a subsequent meeting. If you don't adjourn the first meeting, we need to be in some way in the future, maybe together, I haven't accounted for it.
Well, that's, that's one of the things I asked originally. So we may have missed it, but I can see you're turning maybe very clear that you cannot continue that meeting, that you actually, and then I think, once again, this is maybe detail, but if someone collapses on the diner, says, I'm asleep, you know, the meeting's over. You know, you can't say we continue. So, so that's been a little down in my mind.
Yes, I think that those issues have been very, very finely addressed because they didn't want five meetings to translate to ten meetings.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to take this up again, let's take, take off courage and pick up the...
Change your way.
Well, no, it has also, if you don't adjourn meeting number one, that's a consideration that you can't continue.
Yeah, that's a bad idea.
Another question. Is there any related impact, the developer fees, line up on funds 1217 at the, at Oracle's, remember, for example? Are there any, the possible goal to the minor impact of the A U's?
My sense is we're only getting impact fees reviews on A U's, is that...
Yeah, I mean, we're going to follow that as if we somehow went to update our P P Ps or our cover of 17 P that someone had submitted that preliminary application, and we went and updated it later, that, that pushes with the folks.
Sound good, good, okay.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay, so let's move to the next module.
Okay, so we are on the next module. These are three additional bills that impact on that, that we're not as, as pushing off, or that's another one that we just discussed. So this, this bill creates additional requirements for the city. We'll have the, we'll have the website. However, this bill, 1483, requires that cities put their current schedule keys, their filings, their ability requirements for zoning and development standards, annual pre-vehicle codes, and financial codes, and an archive of their nexus studies and cost of service studies on the city's website. So as I mentioned, we have a lot of this information on our website, and we'll probably need to review it and update it accordingly. So as I mentioned, 1486, this kind of prevails the requirements when the city has to dispose of what we consider surplus land, it revises the definition, and it clearly states in more local agencies. It spans the definition of local agencies, tank of J Q As, utilities, it makes it pretty much as broad as possible. And it means any land owned by, in our case, the city, in which the government or the council takes formal action at regular over meeting with written findings of a land is surplus and is not necessary for the agency's use. So in a surplus, the city has to notice it, provide it available to a host of different potential options, particularly affordable housing. The law now makes it very clear that you can't prohibit residential use as a condition of a sale or lease. In the existing law, there was a priority for affordable housing for seniors and disabled persons. It removed that priority. Any wire, possibly the city, it lives to the terms of the disposition of surplus land, should provide H T D with a process file. H T D can make findings if it believes that the city violated the city law and can notify the attorney general. And then this one is, is pretty severe. If it believes that the city or other agency violated the requirements, it can impose a penalty, and penalty is 30% of the height of sales price. If there have been multiple violations, it can penalty just 50% of the sales price. And the third of our model sequence is a C W exemption, S B 450. And until the end of November 2025, creates a C W exemption for the conversion structures that have a certificate of occupancy, so hotels, hotels, residential hotels, hotels that convert to supportive or transitional housing. And that's the second module. If there are any questions from the council.
Any questions?
Sorry, yeah, I'll speak to you later.
Seth.
Hi, Seth. What sort of things do you have in mind of the quality of surplus lands?
I don't have the list of lands that we have, have listed as surplus. I'm not sure that we have a lot of any surplus, to be honest. And there's some, some there that's considered, except surplus land, that we probably do have a decent amount, is what I would call access by your way. So we do have land that, that is, is probably the way that we may have been using as roads, that is designated as roads. And so sometimes what we've done in the past is we will push the use as a road, and we have, we sold it to an adjacent property owner because it has no value to anyone else, because it may be of a small size or irregular shape. So that's something that I don't consider it, except surplus land, but I'm not aware of, but we can create a list. I mean, it's something we're supposed to do anyway, if we have a surplus land.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so are there other questions, Councilman?
Second, a little closer. So can you, um, other agencies, J Q As, utilities, still being there, ask this question? Because just in case, that our school districts currently, you know, we've been scheduled to fall to school districts.
I don't think, can you elaborate on what I was asking about?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I didn't see that, but I think I've just maybe showed it, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to provide it back here. And then during the last discussions, they weren't, so just making sure.
Sure, I can, I can look that up and handle it.
No question.
Okay, well, Ma was doing that. Are there any other questions or...
Yeah.
Are anyone from the audience who wants to ask a question about these last few in this module? All right, just give me an opportunity. All right, so you can get that back to...
Yeah, I'll get that back there.
Later. Let's go to the module three.
So these last three are the two-year bills. And so we don't have to worry about them in this session, but I'm sure it can now, some of them will go forward. But these, these bills are currently, right now, is probably described as, I know they're various regulations, but I'm just, I'm just describing them as they currently stand. So S B 592, again, is another, another update to the Housing Accountability Act. I think I mentioned to you that the Housing Accountability Act applies to residential units. It applies to mixed-use projects, where two thirds of the projects include residential projects, and it applies to transitional and support housing. This will extend it to A U's. So that's one of the provisions that's we found in two. It also applies for written, if there's a recent note, an application that we deemed incomplete, a written expiration needs to be given within thirty days. An application is considered complete when submitted, when submitted. Low density, these also define to include a reduction in the number of bedrooms, another expense disapproval, it currently provides for disapproval when a local agency votes on action, and now it would switch votes to take action, I think, in case for several minutes, maybe a staff ever making a decision so that on an actual vote, maybe kind of just encompass more actions. So that's S B 592. S B 50, the law comes out in 2019. This is the one that you might recall, you know, that's what I described, is where you have a single family and how that could be now for residential law units, as long as they don't alter the outside too much, that's what this one was. So that's, so a whole family structure, as I mentioned, it can be on vacant land, or it can be an existing structure without substantial alteration to the outside, and can, can, this, this has to be the, for residential law units, has to be the local heights and block coverage that existed on July 1 of 2019. If it meets those qualifications, there's a streamlined administrative process that's established from C Q. The city has to notify the applicant within sixty days if there's any conflicts with any, any laws or any requirements of the city. Otherwise, it's deemed to comply with those laws, and there's a limitation on parking standards. If it is approved, it is approved outside after three years, it can qualify for a one-time, one-year extension. And then there's this provision to grant equitable community incentives for either a job or a housing project, or a transit or housing project, and these incentives can allow the leaders on the maximum density and parking requirements. And then there's A B 4284, which is the mitigation fee act. This one really kind of complicates what I call, we impose fees, if you guys have a layer to do an exist study, and then go ahead and impose the fee. In this case, the city would have to also make an individualized determination per project, of the amount and type of fee that we can charge for the nexus study actually matches up with the individualized project. So it's a whole other layer and step of determination that we don't currently have to do. So that's something also that we need to watch out for. And your housing impact requirement can be imposed on the 12th, or on those major and extent to the impact period. So, so these are the three two-year bills that are still ongoing.
Okay, so just a little clear on the two-year bill concept. What that means is it's not finished, it's actual process, and it's not ready to go to the government's debt. So there's still room for modification, but likely, it's pretty well set to go forward as it is, or is there latitude?
Sure. So obviously, the doubt these bills are stacked, it's specifically about these. The legislative process stayed way longer, trying to get two types of bill here, but there's actually two types of two-year bills that you have a vote here. So S B 50, for example, that bill never made it out of its House of Lords, it's still in the Senate, it's in the Senate Appropriations Committee, the chair of the committee, I would say, there, so that's where it's stopped. S B 50 next year, since it's in its original House, will be subject to a set of streamlined deadlines and move out of the Senate. So S B 50, since it's still in its House of Lords, and next year will need to be, but it's out of the Appropriations Committee and out of this full Senate, probably in January. It's, it'll have to go through a four committee process in the Assembly. The bill can be amended as soon as the legislature recombines for session on January 6, and it can be amended any number of times throughout the process. The other two measures, S B 428, S B 80, 4283, S B 592, both of those bills made to the, to the second House, so the Senate for A U, 4283, the Assembly for 592, since those bills are already out of their House of Lords, and those will not be subject to legislative deadline until later in the year. So those bills will probably sit for the first three to four months of the legislative session, and then when all the new bills or entries kind of catch up to them, then we'll probably do it with these in the second House. But all of these bills can be amended, not going to set it stone hard on any of these, I would anticipate. So for example, like 1483, Mr. Grayson amended that, it would vary in the session, and he said, I'm glad you did it. So it's a staple, it's essentially saying, we're putting this language in, this is what we're thinking about, we want to be as often for it during interim, so this is kind of what we're thinking about. Most officers don't do that, but I think it's good, I think that impact fees, it's something that Mr. Grayson showed an interest in before, there's some legislation on it before. There to get required study, a couple of years ago, that study came out three months ago, and that's what's kind of regaled some of the interest in impact fees. So whether you use bills as they are now, or set in stone, should also be noted, any of these bills can be completely reintroduced and ranked in action as well. So while we're talking about two-year bills, there's nothing that would prevent any of these officers from reintroducing ranked vehicles to address the same problems.
All right, any questions from the council? Raise your hand.
Thank you. S B 592, the two-year, I think that is what they have, gas, and applications de-completing, and, oh my gosh.
Yeah, there were, I mean, there was a lot of work being done, particularly against those provisions, on the application provision. That's, that was very problematic, I think, the two, the office had a little aggressive, and a lot of people had various position concerns at the end for what could happen, could be committed under, under that. So, no, that's definitely one of the things that we've been stressing, particularly when you're related, it's a pre-very, all of the, all of the various provisions that are in on those bills, on, you know, meetings, or, applications, or intempletes, I think. On its own, I think the other following this line, but we can have a look at it, and so it's how we have the other things that are going on, it's, yeah, it's a lot.
Councilman Lewis? I think it was my best in 50. I know that earlier, at some point in the process, it was in print and going through some of the reasons, the definition of John Rich was not very fleshed out, it was oddly, really almost like a qualitative description. Did that one let, from that, the fine, the, 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 the appropriations, or is this one, it left it to come back and look at in January?
Yeah, as I recall, they, they kind of left it, so there's some, some broad parameters, and they are allowing to H C D to actually make the interpretations as to when to scrap, you know, what falls into those John Rich categories. Yeah, it's going to be up to H C D to define that, it's a big, some broad parameters, and essentially, jobs has a balance, or you have it as, as it were. But yeah, ultimately, my guess is the legislature will try to do a far line of that, and will give you the parameters, ultimately, we don't like it so technical in detail that we want those details in extension. There should also be noted, I'll take this, there, there was another bill that you did include, but because of God, it was going to be forwarded to that S B 50 question, which was S B 4 by McGuire, he was the Chair of the Government Finance Committee, it was kind of within Sacramento, if you would say. S B 50 was the San Francisco version of the bill, this was more of the southern version of the bill. So there's definitely, this is not kind of a, we're getting a vacuum, there are other, there are other politics at play that was rather S B 50 conversation. I think that this is a particular bill, I have no doubt that the Senator will be pursuing some form of this, no mixture. He's got last year, year before, this is something, but the politics are such that he's definitely going to have to work the board collaboratively to maybe get something, if you kind of see what he's trying to do, but actually, the details will definitely be, if the bill is sort of extra, will be modified in subject to extreme negotiation.
Are there council questions or comments? Are there anyone from public? Then why don't you come on down?
I can just ask from here.
Can we, to, be at the microphone, so we can hear you? Be at the microphone so we can communicate.
And just to answer, council members, there's a question, it looks like school district has dropped, related to the agency definition.
It's pretty, it's pretty broad, yeah. School, sewer, water, utility, and local renewable partnerships, any kind of class, job hours authority, successor entry, turn RBA, acting authority, or other political subdivision of the state. So I feel all right, also, thank you for looking at it, but you know, I welcome the challenges that are given each by the community, specifically.
First, I do want to, I do want to say, coming down, etc., and your patients. What if you have small, big, uh, copies of this power of the city offices? I think they're probably, they have a lot of those, like, apples.
I would imagine that they can be posted online.
We're gonna post it online, I hope.
So there'll be a city website, and you can go to that, and you can see all of them in copies, do what you like.
I'm doing it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Melissa, wait, no, Grace is coming down. Yeah, we kind of got to ask. She's a little trying, that's why we're running low, that's good. Okay, Grace, good.
There's a question, you may know it at my lobby yet, so I don't know if it's on my comments, so. Now, I'm going to add, you forgot my meeting passes. This is related to the residential percentage. So on the Montoya residence, and now twenty-four plus years, that we will so much develop commercially, we develop residentially. So I couldn't see any notes about the contribution, residentially changing or increasing or decreasing. So my question is, do we, as a unit, having flexibility, does any flexibility exist with increasing the contribution from residential developments to allow from seventeen or twelve that distribution percentage? So the city is more able to buy certain downtown parcels to preserve and for civic use, because the downtown parcels are so far, so far more expensive. It's going to start to be very impossible to start to buy them if it's not available. So if we could, as a city, get some flexibility from these developments and increasing the percentage that they pay into from seventeen or twelve, in order to, I'm sorry, I may have a layback on this here, so that's my question.
What's your question? Seeing these are impact fees that you're placing papers on new development, what kind of options do we have? Like, it sounds pretty limited at this point.
So an immediate increase on an impact fee requires us to update our next study, and so obviously, depending on, you just heard from SB 330, depending on what application is submitted, any increases may not actually happen until the application. So you would have to, you would share that the increase was warranted, and then it would depend on when the application came in.
Okay. So I guess the short answer probably goes to, one of the ways that it could be done, it's going to be very difficult with SB 30, 330, or otherwise. The other side of that, of course, is there are other ways to fund acquisition of open space and art property, and that's through either sales tax or an actual parcel tax, and those things are not affected by what we're talking about here. So impact fees are being targeted as something that needs special processing, much more rigorous than it's been in the past. So probably it's not going to be as easy to get it there as, not to say it's easy, but as it would be to look at a sales tax or something like that. All right. Other questions or comments?
Can we get some feedback from the audience as to whether they like this kind of a program, whether their board tears, how their neighbors feel about this kind of thing? We have got to have a more educated populace. How are we going to make that happen?
Okay, that's a good question, and we certainly are open for comments on that. We have one last segment of this presentation to go through, but let's think about responding to that question, whether this is helpful or if in fact, uh, not. So can you give us the last kind of hook in the future or what's next?
Yes, so, so as was mentioned earlier, obviously, there were a significant number of housing bills introduced this year, approximately two hundred. Looking forward to next year, I don't know if it's going to be two hundred, but I anticipate there will be a lot of housing bills. You know, obviously, this is government administration, the legislature, we don't have an election between now and next year, so you're primarily dealing with the same crop of legislators. So I would definitely anticipate additional legislation on the themes that were touched upon this year, I think we're likely to continue to see. There is definitely a feeling from a lot of authors of these pieces of legislation in Sacramento that local government is akin to housing creation, and if, if it only wasn't for cities dragging their feet, we have houses everywhere. Obviously, you know, as, as advocates, we're constantly reminding, you know, members of legislature committees, staff, the cities' local businesses, that's not, we can, we can, we can permit and streamline, we make sure that things fit in communities, but ultimately, you know, we don't, we don't put hand or scales. So, you know, really, a lot of our work has been educating members, stakeholders, committee staff, as to what, what we sees the proper role for local governments, and make sure that we continue this kind of, you know, each community is unique, we are, you know, communities haven't got the state or not, are not the same, so the legislature will pose these kinds of one-size-fits-all, whether it's streamlined home projects, I mean, the meeting, the meeting requirements that went into 330, and we talked a lot about those, if it's going to see bad, that will start out with a previous previous, I mean, that five, this is kind of a second session that we got to, I mean, that will start out really, really bad. So will the bills be quite as great? I don't think we'll see, after, assuming that the bills are signed in the schedules, I think we'll see major ADU legislation, I think, but that's probably pretty much, you know, tidy up with this, maybe we see, you know, again, the provisions of 592, like the HAA, extend over to ADUs, but I don't think we're going to see massive ADU change anymore. I think we'll see a continued push on, on streamlining, making sure that the government for local government process works as expeditiously as possible. I think from this administration that started talking about revenue review, and how that, and how the local revenue numbers are calculated, we saw just a month or two ago that HCD told SCAC, the California Association of Governors, that their revenue target was a million homes short. I mean, they, they, they increased their, you know, I mean, so, but really, a very aggressive administration, so I anticipate we'll see some of that, so it wouldn't surprise me at all to, you know, to have local governments, upset, be told by the state we need to put, you know, even higher than that, it's maybe to put even more on us again, to associate funding and potential penalties with achieving or not achieving those greater numbers, I think all of that will be on the table next year. You know, so obviously, you'll be in the, with the membership, you know, since later, it's not a big again, to really stress that the impacts that these specific bills have on law yet, this is not just going to back, you know, you're not going to state policy that there's, there should be all the impacts here on the ground. You know, we didn't always win this year, but they definitely put up a good fight, and they were definitely working with the city's best interest, which was, from a law perspective, is advocates is right, I mean, if we can have them, obviously, we, I think, on your behalf, if we can have your legislators, I think, on your behalf, that, that makes our job a lot easier, I think, that they've done a really good job on that. I do think that we'll see, hopefully, for people at the state office, some proposals that help cities hold developers' account, so those projects that have included, I'm just kind of English, so that there's some more, some more certainty. So I think that we'll see a lot of housing legislation next year. I would say, in general, maybe until election year, members of legislature just tend to get a little more, kind of tighten up a little bit, you know, they, they're obviously running for election, they're going to be feeling to their, their basis, so I don't assume that we'll see if it's quite as dramatic, but instead, as I said, I think we'll see the SB 50 conversations continue, and I think that's probably where we go, but legislature returns on January sixth, and they'll have, I'll bring some of them mid-February to introduce legislation, so in, you know, in six months, we'll, we'll kind of have universal bills that we're going to work on this year.
Okay, sounds good. Any thoughts from council members? All right, one thing I was going to respond to, Casey, I just wanted to focus that here. Our latest, I guess, kind of understanding now is the job housing balance is the key piece. It is not mentioned in any of the legislation in any significant way, and yet, it seems to be so central to greenhouse gas emissions, you know, the health and welfare of the people who are commuting every day, the cities and their dead city. So I'm hoping that someone's going to pick up the mantle on that one, and it has to happen fairly quickly, because we're already seeing very productive job centers going into housing projects. I think because of some of the things that are being done by the legislature, which kind of incentivizes and provides credits, and, you know, gives these folks a sense that you take perfectly good rental commercial property, you tear it down and you build housing instead. And for me, it doesn't seem to make any sense, but somehow the math makes sense, and we're starting to see that, and that, once it goes away, it doesn't come back, because now your better community becomes totally dead, or you get, there's nothing else here. So I'm hoping that we can get that somehow on the table, and get people excited about the potentiality of working on that, and incentivizing, you know, some of the Silicon Valley folks to locate in Grandway or with Stockton or Tracy, and lands cheap, the people of the same ones that work there, they have to drive three hours to get there. You know, so anyway, that's my little soapbox on this thing, and I hope we'll have a chance to do something on those lines.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very good observation, and it seems oftentimes in Sacramento that jobs, housing balance is thrown around, and those that use it are always on their jobs are, and housing isn't, without a recognition that the balance will work otherwise. So it seems like when, a lot of times in Sacramento, of course, when it's discussed, it's very specific types of job housing balance, and any where we have, or with other entities, where you have what most everyone considers as, as recognized, good jobs, housing balances, so I hope we still need more of. So yeah, it's, it's difficult on that, because there's the nuance of, there's more than one way of approach, jobs, housing balance is often lost in Sacramento.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, other comments, if I can.
I think the only little white piece of sunshine was SB five, right? And so how are we going to use that, or can we use it, or how do we now get positive benefit?
Yeah, so yeah, SB five was, was good, I mean, obviously, that's one of those bills that were, were with the government, we'll sign, ultimately, the state general fund will back, will back for that, so it's great, it's a way to produce a local, locally supported affordable housing with the state as a true financial partner. So I know that, you know, post, post-DEAL, a lot of us have been trying to work on something that kind of fills some of that, that gap. The way that SB five is constructed is kind of a ramp up, so it would require the developer local plan, and that would identify affordable housing, specific projects, things that are, so it just had a local process to ask to go to, and then that thing gets submitted to Sacramento for review, approval, and ultimately, set aside of funds. The way that the funding works on that, because it starts off slowly, I think it starts out at two hundred million a year, and adds an additional two hundred million for the first five years, and then two hundred fifty million a year for the next four or so, nine years, that would give two billion dollars a year for the state investment. So it's, it's a significant state investment, and then that, if they're actually good, it would be ongoing every year, and it makes that, obviously, it starts off slow, it's going to be able to ramp up, there'll be some local work, kind of developing plans, getting approval, local meetings, those types of things. But by that time, the idea is, once the locals are kind of getting that place, and there's certain projects in Sacramento for review, approval, and funding, that the funding will definitely happen as well. So yes, I know that was, was great, you've been working really hard on trying to find something like that, there's a lot of optimism that the government will, will sign it, and you know, it is a large number for the state general fund. I think the, the hope is that the government is realizing it wants to do all of these new housing units, the state is going to be more tolerant of this process as opposed to just dictating that, and obviously, the government's policy partner, the funding partner is great as well, so.
Any other thoughts? All right, so this is an opportunity for folks to comment on what we talked about tonight. Also, Lynn's question, I think is a good one, whether or not this session has been useful, and is this something we should do on a regular basis, or is it just not worth the time? So any thoughts, anybody willing to give us some feedback? No? I understand that word, and I'm okay with that, you know?
I think it'd be great if, I personally would like to see it on a regular basis.
Good, good, all right, thank you. Any other breaking one down?
So if you, if you're a funny person, you know, this is one of my soapbox things, it would be nice, I like to do these more on a regular basis, because I'm sure it misses a lot of people here that would more refer to the sixteen-foot limit for EDUs. That's not sixteen feet as we define it in law yet, that's sixteen feet as the state defines it, and seven hundred and fifty square feet isn't necessarily seven hundred and fifty square feet, because if you have a full basement, that's not fifteen hundred square feet, that's seven hundred and fifty square feet, and the more the community knows the various little things, the less chances there will be, or feelings because they think somebody's going to slip something, slip, slip something by and bury us for those costs. Thank you.
Your thoughts? All right, I like that. Anyone else? Yeah, come on.
Okay, Jake, it's up to Miranda, because once we have these things, we don't have the money, I guess, or the, or the, I guess, we, we probably don't have the money, we don't have the people that, that actually want to attend things like this, and maybe law gets ahead of us in terms of, we've had more issues, and the people that have, the thousands of more issues, seem to be more interested in what's happening with their cities. But I find this been, it's been going on in Miranda, and the ones of us that have been working with those in Miranda, they change so often, it's like vacuum all, and you get one of them done, and they amend it, you have to start all over, and, and you have very good people that can get through these, it was very discouraging, very frustrating about this process is, there's nobody that's going to come behind and find out why there's eighty-eight thousand homes that already been permitted that haven't been built, so nobody's really coming and reporting any of the progress on any of the stuff that they're putting in place, which doesn't make any sense at all. And there's a lot of people that are very frustrated, that are moving to other states, and they're going to find out that a lot of the middle class and the people that, they want to pay the bills, won't be here to pay them. So that's just a thought from somebody working in over the last couple of years with these bills, it's, it's awful, and it's frustrating, and that's where we are. Thank you for having us, these are wonderful, and I'll keep coming, as long as you keep inviting us. They wasn't officially advertised, if that's the thing, why not get a long word that all in on this? We don't want to use each other's expertise, right? So we should make sure to advertise with you guys too, right? If you want them.
All right, I know, but Miranda is an entity that exists, so yes, you're all welcome, and we can make sure that your folks know what we're doing. That's easy. Other thoughts, questions, points of view? Okay, well, with that, I will, yeah.
I just want to make sure, I want to, so, one of the people who's over, only thing I just want to say, we, um, first of all, thank you, the presentation's of course, which is fantastic, so thank you. The only thing I would really like to do is, you know, I did some, obviously, some people that have met with them, heard back from a lot of people, they're like, "So we could get here," you know, you know, still have that and some of those types of things to do, excuse me, thanks. So anything else I'd ask for you to do, if you know, thanks to Jack, you know, bigger than this, on the website, and that's on the next, if you know people who would want to be here, and could be here, please just share this lightly, because this sort of community education is critical, has got to be a moment now, so maybe the help, the city, others, that learned that this recording exists, would be really helpful, just to make sure multiple, that kind of some connection, so just a quick, kind of, a quick, um, going forward here.
Well, I like that, please, you know, you just add a little enhancement. If you go to the city's site and website, there are several different ways we communicate to people in the area, even those that live there, can get the, obviously, a group of you, can get the, we can round up, and you'll find articles there that relate to Miranda, and even the other law, the other part of the country, there's stuff to that for them. So if you have an interest, and you know someone who's not connected, but wants to be, make sure that not only see this, but also connect. sure that not only see this, but also connect on those other real ones, because Jeff does a great job of making sure those are done on a regular basis, they're all informative, they give you the information you need to know about what's going on in the city, and it's free, you can't beat it, okay? All right, so with that, we want to adjourn, thank you all very much, and really appreciate it.